Meeting for February 8th, 2021. First order on the agenda is the minutes from the meeting on January 25th.
You hear Barry?
There was a typo on the bottom, wasn't it? Well, we can amend it.
I didn't hear it. Let me read it, Bill, and then...
Where the meeting was closed, there was no vote? My recollection.
Which meeting you're talking about? The overall meeting or the...
The last meeting. That's who we're voting on, right?
Yeah, you mean the adjournment?
Yeah. What does it say in the minutes? I don't have the minutes in front of me.
The adjournment would be the last item.
Yeah. James made motion to close the meeting.
That's it. No vote. Second, no vote.
Wasn't regarded. I know we did it.
We'll put those minutes off. Gail's got to have them in her notes. They'll have to be corrected. I don't have Gail's notes to make the amendment with me. Gail is out tonight, so we'll have to wait until she's available to amend those.
What's the other thing that came in? We could talk about that, right? Somebody wanted site plan.
Wasn't aware of that. It's not on... We're not on the agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda. It's Andrea Skolin. Skolin.
I don't have my phone on. Or is it email?
What, that Blackstone Street?
Yeah.
Looking for site plans and stuff.
Yeah, for 12.
Which lights at Blackstone?
The one for Jason. Yeah, hi, Chuck.
Commercial?
No. Is that what? That's in the back. There's a barrels as all found. Put the driveway line to stop. Amor's houses here.
Yeah.
I don't know what she's looking for. She got this.
But that would be a site plan.
Highlighted. But she wants to see the plans for it.
Oh, she has to go to the building department. That would have been a... The only thing that would have been would have been 81P if there was a variance originally.
Yeah, there was. We gave him that. He'd been there, living there three years at least.
Yeah, did we ever do an 81P on it? I mean...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, then...
I'm looking for obtain any site plan, survey that you may have.
Well, that's got to go to the building department. That's not a issue.
Contact the surveying company.
Are they looking to do the...
Two-point architects.
Did that come in today? Because I didn't... I haven't seen it.
I saw it tonight, just before it came in.
Came in today.
All right, I'll try and respond to it tomorrow. Generally don't deal with email stuff if they don't come to the meeting.
Yeah. Came in at 12:45. I don't want it to vote.
Yes.
Damon, I'm in the meeting here.
All right. Damon's present. Beautiful.
John's present. John Van Nistelz is present.
Barry Arterola present.
Damon, if you have an opportunity, could you also provide Gail the January 25th meeting? If it's safe, you still have it?
Yeah, they're all on YouTube.
Yeah, just in case she doesn't have the vote at the end of the meeting. She can look at it on the recording. Thank you. Just, you guys' knowledge, we get our assessment from CMRPC today. It's gone up again, which I presumed it would. Email costs us $1,756.78 to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
That for a year?
That's per-year assessment.
Do you need a motion for that?
No, no, that's already built into the budget, so...
You already voted on it. The vote was no good for this?
No, we get the special permit, and I'll get to that once we get to the meeting. And Jimmy opted out. There was one other thing that someone emailed me from Ashland, the Holliston, about opening a catering service out of a home. As typical, I don't discuss board business via email. So basically, what I just advised her is it's not permitted by right, and that she'd have to come before the board to explain the use, so we could further identify whether it's even an option for her under the special permit application, but... I haven't heard back from her, so... I don't deal with board stuff via email.
But she's looking to move to Mendon, right?
Yeah, she was looking to move to Mendon, but it... I'm not even sure we could... Looking through the use table and stuff, I'm not even sure you could provide a variance on that. I mean, it's prohibited for that area. Catering business out of a home.
So she could be preparing food?
Yeah. Yeah.
Residential system is not sufficient enough to handle something like...
Yeah, and I don't think we want to start making available those type of businesses in the residential sector.
It might have helped too.
To open the meeting, we got a few more minutes. I'll go into description of what occurred. When we took special permit vote at the last... At the initial hearing, Jimmy had abstained, and I failed to miss it. The special permit would require a vote of four. And unfortunately, Damon wasn't present, so we are going to review the entire hearing. We're going to go through the entire hearing again based on... So Damon has an opportunity to review the facts and make a decision on his vote. And the applicant has certainly been... What's the word I'm looking for? Cooperative, yeah, in doing this. And, you know, we looked at several different options. It felt that this was the best option for the town. And John Fernandez, who is the one who had contacted me, agreed and was willing to forego the initial hearing and for us to allow us to rerun the hearings so we have a probable Okay. Also, we have... Do you have the... House's final report?
I don't. Do you? No, I didn't. You had it earlier and you didn't expect to have to make a full presentation here today? Just he thought... You didn't think it was necessary to...
Well, unfortunately, it's a requirement for the presentation. I mean, Jeff had cleared all... You know, it pretty much gave him the nod of approval for it. I know we have it in... John, can you look up Jeff's? I'll see if you can pull up their report.
I'm trying to do it now.
What's that?
He has a final report. The final report. Okay, the decision.
What's that?
Be okay, the decision.
Yep.
Was that before New Year's?
I think it was... No, I think it was just a couple of weeks ago.
Be okay was a few weeks ago.
Oh, you know what? It might be just before the New Year's.
Why did you just before New Year's?
Damon, do you have the plans available and stuff for you?
Try that again, Bill.
I said, do you have your plan... The plans available and stuff to review? Yes? Okay. Furthermore, so with this opportunity, I'm going to ask the applicants to just run through what they're doing here for the, you know, for the community to have an opportunity to Have their say and look and...
I just didn't hear you open the public hearing, that's all.
Yeah, but... Oh, yeah, this time I'm going to read into... Hopefully, that's in here. Reading to the record. From MGL, Chapter 48, Section 11 notice is given that a public hearing be held by teleconference agents in person on February 8th, 2021 at 7:15 in the Mendon Town Hall at 20 Main Street. Consider a special permit for construction of a 3,200 square foot marijuana retail building with required package drainage, new well septic system. At 103 Oxford Road in the Mass, 00756, the owner is DJM Investment of 220 Pulaski Boulevard in Mendon. Excuse me. That was recorded... That article was recorded, put in the newspaper on...
I can find you something different better. I can find what happened if it comes out a little differently. I think my issue is because it's in 2007.
I don't have my secretary tonight, so I'm trying to... In the Mofo Daily News on Friday, January 31st, and Friday, February 7th? Oh, I'm in the wrong year. I'm sorry.
I have January 22 and January 29.
You're correct. January 22nd and January 29th. My apologies. I was still in 2020. All right, so there was a post in the Daily News on those dates. All the butters were notified. We'll move on to... Now, this is your only review on the special permit portion, the site plan review. The site plan has already been approved. So as far as the special permit, marijuana establishment in the town of Mendon is not by right even in the zone. It requires a special permit. Special permit reviews, you know, whether this type of business fits the area, fits the general well-being of the town, and there are no... There's nothing that would be deemed inappropriate for the town of Mendon. So at this time, I don't know if there's anything the applicant needs to add.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Attorney Chris Ryan, attorney for the petitioner. Just a couple of quick things. You actually did have my presentation, because you're right, the special permit was already approved by a majority vote, so we're here... I'm sorry, not the special permit, the site plan. So we're here specifically and just for the special permit. And if you look at your table of uses, this property is located in the general business zone, which under this chapter, by a special permit, this can be granted. The criteria is sitting here in the location of uses, and it has a few things in it. It says that the community had to sign a house community agreement already with the marijuana facility, which was done with the Board of Selectmen. It says that the center has to be located within the general business zone or the highway business zone, which we are there. The next thing is it says here that it can't be located any closer than 500 feet to the nearest school. That would be a K to 12 school specifically in your bylaw. And then it also says that... It puts a burden on the dispensary, which is normal, which is except during transportation, all the marijuana has to be held inside the building. So there's no marijuana hanging outside. They're not doing outdoor sales or, you know, anything like that, okay? And let's see, the other thing here is that they're not going to disseminate marijuana to minors, which obviously that's one of the big things that the Cannabis Control Commission wants to make sure does not happen. So if you look at the table of uses and then you go to this section on what we're talking about, this dispensary does in fact meet those criteria. As you know, we already went through site plan review, so I just want to request that everything that my esteemed colleague and I put forth already at the last meeting, that's in the record. So therefore, I request that that record be brought forward to this meeting so that this is part of it, okay? So we're incorporating the existing record into now, okay? Doing that, unless you want me to, Section 1.06 of your zoning bylaws talk about what this dispensary has to have, which is pretty much everything in site plan review, such as compliance for parking, you know, lot size, frontage. We went over all of that already. Everything was in compliance, and therefore you did in fact issue the site plan approval. So with those, unless there are other questions, we've really incorporated everything into this meeting, and I'd ask that we get a majority vote.
But nothing's changed.
Nothing at all has changed. The only thing I did this time, because I had the opportunities, I brought these renderings, because I know one of the issues with the planning board is you want to be able to see what they might want to do and have input into it. So I asked the architect on this project to take a good look at... To come up with some renderings for us so that you can look at them and maybe give the architect some direction. Some of these things I don't like. All these I like, but like number two and three, I look at those and say, no, I don't like that.
Yeah, I actually like the first one and the last two, so...
Yeah. You know what's funny?
Any chance that can get put up on the screen?
Yeah, how would we do that?
Yeah, I'll maybe add a digitally, whether you could send it to Dan or... Yeah, we're going to address one, five, and six. The others are pretty much...
Hey, Dan, if you want to just email it to me, it's easier, do that.
It does fit Mendon very well, and I'm for Blackstone.
You walk around the woods, I mean, you might find one of those.
Different color on the next one.
I know.
I guess one other thing we have to think about, that if you remember the site plan review, the building is not straight parallel looking at the road. It's...
Right, sure.
So what I'm looking at in that case is the side of the building. That's what people will see the most of, I suppose.
Yeah, when they pull in.
As they pull in. So that's where there'll be a sign, let's say, on that side of the building. So number one actually looks good for a sign. You could put a sign right in the building there.
The ones I like either number one or this one here.
Yeah, I think I like that one.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the red VW fits in the picture quite well.
Yeah, I think VW has to stay.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I think the last one's a little...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, that is. That's an awful lot. I think with the architect, what I had done is...
Yeah, I like this one a bit.
Number five?
Yeah, if you guys could... Damon, could you focus on number five? Because I think that rendering was going to...
Yeah, I'm going to scan it and publish it.
That's option F, traditional tool, right? To be clear.
Option F, yes.
Option F.
Yes, option F, I'm sorry. And again, be clapboard type siding, you know, and so forth. So it does fit the design, in fact, what...
And I'm a little partial to it because it looks a little bit like my building, so...
It does. It also... The whole thing, the architect came out something really good here, because whatever you want to call it, the structure on the top, it adds a lot of light into the lobby down below.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Yeah, because it's a single-family, you know, I'm saying, single-story structure.
Right.
So you walk in and you're going to have all that light from above and so forth. So it would look really, really nice.
Plus it would add some attraction to it.
Yeah, it would. And then there still is enough room on the left side, let's say, to put some sort of sign so that people would identify it when they come in and so forth. So that is...
You realize this needs to be approved separately under the signed bylaw.
Yes, absolutely. But I guess the first thing we want to do is just get your input as far as what type of design you'd like to see, and that's here.
Is that the right one?
Yes, that would be... That would be the rendering you're looking at. If you could, you know, the planning board would certainly appreciate if you could convince your client to go in that direction, either that'll come back with an alternative render.
Yeah. Actually, our client likes that design.
Okay.
I don't think that's going to take much convincing.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. Need to say more about that than that.
No, so I do have Jeff's... In John's phone, we have the email, and he pretty much... There's nothing that shows outstanding on his final report. Yeah, and he... I recall at the meeting, he felt that, you know, the plan was more than adequate for its use and, you know, it's located. So with that being said, not that we're going to rehash the site plan, but as far as the special permit, as far as you didn't... When we're on the special permit, I tend to look at things like visibility in the entrance and exit, being able to see down the road. Is it a hazard? Is it, you know, is it going to cause issues with the neighbors? But you had addressed all that.
Yes.
It began in fencing and, you know, and as a matter of fact, a couple of... I recall a couple of the butters were here at the time and were satisfied with those... With the way you had it set. So with all that being said, I'm going to open up to any questions, the community, if the community has any questions they'd like to address. Everybody?
Are we in a line, Dan?
All right, then, I think at this point, Damon, you satisfied with what you see with all the findings of the site... Of the special permit?
Yes, everything looks good. I can make... Want to make a motion here?
Somebody needs to make a motion to...
Ken, Damon, or I can, whatever you want.
Yeah, I might make a motion to accept this... To approve the special permit for 103 Oxford Road.
All those in favor? Barry, I...
Damon, aye.
John, aye.
Bill, aye. And you guys should be all set. Have that decision.
I will... Well, I'll adjust it for the... I would just convert it in the date and everything.
Okay, so you'll drop it?
Yeah, we've got the old one that was already approved. I just go in there and make some adjustments.
Well, thank you for your cooperation, certainly, and... Well, thank you for your cooperation, certainly, and, and thanks for the opportunity to review the rendering, too. That's, that's big. I'm sure the community will be happy with something that looks of.
What kind of black stuff does he have? The one by Stop and Shop, or the one down the other?
The one by Stop and Shop.
Yeah, I've been in that one four or five times.
It's open.
Oh, it is open now?
It opened last Friday.
He installs safes, so.
Oh, you've been in that one?
Oh, yeah, I've been in that one. It's for Gunfell.
He wasn't a customer.
Yeah, he was a customer.
You should clarify that, John.
Been here four or five times.
You should clarify that.
Yeah.
Makes it sound like you're a frequent flyer.
All right, so the next order of business is, is Jack Hunt around the line, yeah?
I'm here. To those of you who don't recall or unaware, Jack is the one representing town amendment in regards to the property at the corner of Route 16 and North Avenue, and we are trying to work through some zoning possibilities and what we're not to make that, that corner more marketable. So with that being said.
Thank you, Bill. Duncan Chapman is here also from Keller Williams. I was just, I, I think I'll probably be on all your meetings up until town meeting, because, you know, this is a bit complicated, and we're trying to get it done rather quickly. But I will give you an update, that last Wednesday, the town administrator authorized the request for information to go out. So that's going out to some of the major developers in the area. And I know Bill sent me a list of some suggestions. I, I looked at those, and I sent two of those out, Bill, that I could find, but I don't know the rest of them.
I should have asked, but my apologies.
On that.
Last week was a little bit of a.
Yeah.
That's my nephew, I just.
So, that's out, and with the goal that by, I think it's March 5th or 2nd, we will hopefully have some pre proposals from developers on what they think is possible there from a marketing and construction standpoint. Also, Kim has authorized me to start on the bylaw. So I started cobbling this together, and I, I had the pleasure of talking to Ann Mazur, and I'm gonna start talking to some other people, I believe. But, you know, the more I thought about this, this is an unusual situation, because most zoning, as you know, is done on private property. And you're trying to encourage something, prohibit something, tighten up something. But in this case, it's your property, and you can say no at any time, until you sell the property. And, and my point is that after town meeting, Lord willing, some zoning passes, we're gonna go out to RFP to choose a developer, and that developer is gonna be required to show you what they plan on doing on the site. The density, the uses, et cetera, et cetera. And you can always just say, no, thank you, but no. You can't do that normally. So you're in a, a really advantageous position. So I started thinking, as I put this together, you know, how much control do you want to have in this bylaw on what happens there? As I told you last meeting, the more control you put on it, the less interest you'll have on the property. The more flexible you are, the more interest you'll have, and as again I'll say, you can always say no. So I'll just go, if I, if you don't mind, Bill, I'd like to go through and ask some questions. You know, we're talking mixed use. Because of the lack of septic and water, you're gonna be very limited on any commercial use, especially with any kind of restaurant, because it'll just blow the doors off of a, a well, will blow the doors off of that. So I think we can do a mixed use with some flexibility that allows some commercial, some office and alike, as well as a certain amount of density in the residential. And as I told you, we're at about 85 bedrooms max on that site, unless they try some innovative septic systems, and they might be able to get to 100. So some of the, some of the bylaws I was looking at, they have, they require the developer to do a concept plan, and that concept plan has to be approved by the planning board, and then they come in with the site plan review after that. That's something for you to think about. Do you want to do this all by special permit, or as of right, or a combination? I need you to think about that. We need to go over a list of uses that you're gonna allow, either by right or by special permit, and I'll have those for you, maybe at the next meeting. I'm just starting to put that together. You're gonna have a density, but I think engineering's gonna dictate the density unless you want less than 85 bedrooms. If you want less than 85 bedrooms, then we'd have to zone that. What else do I have? Oh, another thing is, Ann gave me, and I don't know where this is at in the planning board's docket, but she gave me, I have it here, I don't know what you guys can see, but the town amended design guidelines. Have you guys discussed those?
Yeah, we actually, I, that hasn't been, you know, that's something we look, look at and utilize, but it hasn't been approved at town meeting or anything like that. Hasn't gone to that nature yet.
Well, it could be approved by your rules and regulations. That's usually where you put design guidelines.
Yeah, it's not in there yet. I mean, that was something that was suggested. We've got a few things going on, we were, we were going to, and I don't want to get too ahead of ourselves, Jack, but, because we've got to keep this simple if we're gonna get this done by town meeting. I can't include all this other stuff at this point in time. I think the conceptual design has to be approved by the planning board. I think it needs to be by special permit. Most stuff is, when it, when it's not something that's cookie cutter and Mendon goes to special permit.
Yep.
So I think, because we need to look at stuff like traffic, that, those type items that, you know, we need to look at the impact that's gonna be there, because Route 16 is already quite a busy road.
I noticed.
Yeah, so we're going to need to, it would need to be by special permit. Secondly, we've, we've got a village concept design that this has kind of got to flow into, that we had started, a lot of work went into, and we're pretty proficient in writing bylaws. I know Kim gave you the go-ahead, but I want you to work closely, and I've got two people that work with me generally when, when we create these bylaws, and I'll put you in touch with them, and maybe we can all work together to make sure, because they've done a lot of work in the Mendon Town bylaws, and they understand what, what we're trying to achieve here. And, but I, I think what you're saying is right. I don't think Mendon is, we already got a use table, so, and if you look at that use table pretty thoroughly, I don't think you're gonna find too much outside of that that we're gonna need to add, but we can change a use table.
Well, I, Bill, I think this overlay district will have its own use table, be very simple, very simple, I think. We can talk about.
It's, yeah, we can talk about that, certainly.
Some of the other questions, and I'm not looking for answers yet, is, you know, because you have control over the parcel, is it apartments or condos? Now, normally, you have no control over that with zoning, but because, again, you control the parcel, I'm a little, Duncan's here, I don't know how much, if you said it must be condos, or it must be apartments, how that would affect anybody bidding on this. I got a hunch it would have an impact.
Yeah, and I'd like to just chime in there, Jack, if I could. Yeah, I mean, that is a key issue, and certainly, you know, your thoughts, thoughts on what they'd like to see was considered, but as Jack had mentioned at the beginning of the call, you know, the more restrictions you have, the less interest, and typically, a call like condos or apartments is done based on the market. The developer wants to create the highest and best use for the developer, obviously, and depending upon where the market is, they'll go, you know, condo or apartments, and obviously, if you go apartments, you always could convert to condos eventually. But typically, my point is, you let the market decide, not that you can't influence and say the town would like to see, but again, to be determined, I just wanted to give you that, those comments.
And then my last piece of items is, and, and you have these in your bylaws, I believe, so we, maybe we can just cross-reference, but things like parking and lighting and landscaping and signage, whether you want required open space, and do you want to give yourself the right to offer waivers? So those are the kind of things that I'm zeroing in on. Again, I just started plugging this together, and I don't have enough to, to give you any answers or a list of things, if you will, to comment on.
Where this, number one, where this is kind of for Mendon anyways, and outside of the box overlay, I think the board's gonna have to use discretion as far as waivers and stuff. Those usually reside with the planning board, obviously.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, I, I think as, as far as whether apartments or condos, I mean, I, I think we just gotta see what comes back from, you know, from the request for information you send out to the developers and see what they're looking for.
Could we put hate restriction on it?
I, I should have mentioned that, I don't know who asked that, but yes, we are assuming an over 55.
Yeah, that'd be great assumption, right.
Well, I was not given that direction.
I don't think, I think, I think going down that road reduces the value of, unless there's somebody out there that, that can mix that. And that was why, one of the names on that list, Bruce Wheeler, deals in that type of stuff consistently.
And, you know, I'm, I've been in this business long enough, and I'm an advocate for affordable housing, and if that's what the town wanted, we could write that in, and if you could get it up to 25%, then the whole thing would count toward your affordable housing quota. But if you want to get top dollar, then affordable housing is a money loser for developers, not a money gainer.
Yeah. Do something to think about, that's all.
Yeah, Duncan here, where is the town amended with their affordable housing percentage? Where do you guys stand today?
I think you're about 3% Bill.
Yeah, we're about 3%.
Got it, okay.
Unfortunately, we, we really, we really don't have a affordable housing bylaw, or, and so it's kind of, it's kind of restricted us, and nobody seems to want to, to want that to Mendon anyways. I think it's a density issue more than anything. But, and Mendon being, even if you run affordable, because we did have a 40B in town at one time, when I guess we got another one.
We have one now.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how equitable they become in a town like Mendon, so I know, I know the first guy had two phases. One was afford, had affordable phase to it, and the, the whole thing was supposed to be affordable phase two. He went back to conventional, because the affordable phase didn't work out well for him. So I think that's the biggest problem towns like Mendon have, is, is, is cost of homes rise in a town like Mendon, and makes affordable really not affordable, you know.
Well, also, they're limited because of lack of water and sewer, at least in some of the town.
Right. Yeah, complex it certainly would be, yeah.
One, one way you could address that would be, take the, the open space community bylaw and, and allow a density bonus. For, in other words, you're allowed X amount of units by, by right, based on the, the build-out plan, and then you give a, like Milford gives a density bonus, certain percentage in those units are, become affordables, or a certain percentage of those units are affordable of the density.
Well, we already allow down to 20,000 square feet. I mean, with septic and well, I don't think you can go any smaller than that, unless we allowed, you know.
Well, you have to have the aggregate, you, you don't want to go any, that was even.
Well, what this gentleman's talking about is what we call in the business inclusionary zoning.
Right.
And you give a bonus to the developer. So say he could build 12 lots, and you're making him build two of them affordable, well, now you let him build 14 lots, and that way he doesn't lose his money, and you get your affordable housing. That's pretty well crafted across the Commonwealth, but you gotta have the will to do it, I guess.
And we would take, moving off the, the open space percentage.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything else we have to come, everything else we have to fall into place.
Right.
You don't do anything.
It would be, you know, where are we gonna measure that density request? By, at, at the application, or, I mean, that's something that, and, you know, if someone comes into a plan for five additional lots.
Right. Here again, it's, so, so it's, it's a.
It's something to look at, I mean.
Still need to make your, your 50% open space, 55% open space comply. You, you know, you wouldn't give that away, but you, but there are some of them where, like, I mean, like, like Applewood, I got, I got like 24 acres of open space, I'm developing 8 acres of land, you know?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, it'd be something certainly to look at.
It'd have to be.
We, we certainly can, you know, when I get to get you together, Jack, with, you know, these, now, the people who write the, who assist me in writing the bylaws in Mendon, they're, one's a lawyer, one's a civil engineer.
Even better.
So they're, they're well crafted in, in both writing the bylaws and legally, you know, reading the bylaw for us, so it gives us a great understanding of where we need to be. And I sort of provide the vision of what this board looks for Mendon. So I think, and plus CMRPC is helping us with the review process with our, they're gonna review, they've already done an initial review, and they said they don't need, need much attending, but there's obviously things we want to do with them, but.
Um, Bill, if, so my task now is I'm gonna talk to a few more people. I'm going to the Board of Selectmen on Wednesday. I, the last meeting I was supposed to go to was canceled, and I'm gonna start breaking this down more. And I'd like to come to your next meeting. And I'd like to come to your next meeting and hopefully have more information. And if you could send me those emails of those two individuals. And Duncan just reminded me that if you can get me the contact information for those developers sooner than later, because RFI is out and the questions and answers are next Wednesday, so we, we need to get them to them.
I'll send you an email tomorrow with the information for all of them. I don't know who you contacted already, but
Lobeser and I can't remember the other one.
Ian?
Pardon me?
Was it Ian?
No, I couldn't find them.
Galaxy.
Oh, Galaxy. Yeah, Galaxy's quite large, so they, it may not be something they want to tackle.
Might be too small, yeah.
Might be too small for them.
He proposed it like a few years back. Didn't he put it, put together an old package?
Oh, Kevin did, yeah. They were talking about Galaxy.
No, I know. Kevin put a big proposal there.
Yeah, we actually had a a proposal put in front of us.
The doubts for the bottom section, I think, right?
Yeah, I think he told me about that.
I had a plan in my wall, this pie in the sky.
Yeah, I don't know if he's still interested, but, you know, we can run it by him. So anyways, I'll get in touch with you tomorrow, Jack, and gotten that and we can stop piecing this whole thing together and get it moving. And, you know, certainly you can update the select board on, on the direction we're heading and where we're going and, and, but we'll work closely with you on getting that bylaw completed as soon as possible and be prepared for the town meeting.
Okay. I look forward to it. It's exciting.
Yes, it is.
As long as someone bids on it.
Hopefully.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Jack, we've owned it long enough.
Yeah, I heard. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Premier of Estates, where are we at on the next order of business?
I have this plan on email also, Joe.
Funny shoes. Corner of North Avenue. I had, I did a site plan for
Oh, yeah.
And then he came and looked at it and there wasn't enough traffic.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure that there's not enough traffic, but. All right, maybe you could walk us through this.
All right, so the, the, I gave you the, the first
Dan, do you have electronic, do you have electronic copies of this?
Yes, yeah. Eight and half by 11.
Yeah.
If you don't have it, I can send it over to you.
If you want to email to me.
Yeah, that'd be great, Damon, if you could just email it to him.
You may have it from contract.
That way we can allow the community to see what's going on.
Yeah, what's, what's, what's the email, Dan? Some reason I don't have it in my phone.
So the first, the first page on this is
Yeah, what's your email?
All right. Okay.
So you can barely see the, the outline in the purple.
Hold on one second, Bob. Dan, if he emails you that, can you bring up the habitat management map that?
Yeah, I can, I scan it too, but can you give me like a bit?
Get his email, Bill.
Did you send it to him?
I don't have his email. I'm asking you for it.
Ah, sorry, D buyer. And then it may not go.
D buyer.
He didn't want anybody to know that.
Yeah, right.
The habitat management area.
I just sent it there, Dan. Let me know if you got it.
I have to take my box. Let me read the, I mean, the cover letter explains everything.
Says I'm deliverable.
So when we prepare the plans for acceptance, when you did your as-built, it was determined that portions of the retaining wall were built on the open space property?
Correct.
Encroachment is prob, approximately 6,200 square feet with approximately 2,100 square feet within the habitat. All right, the original parcel of land was 36 acres. Constructed subdivision required to provide 55% of total area or 20 acres, 20.05 acres. The developer provided 24 acres of open space. After the open spaces deeded to the town, an additional frontage law was created and sold to a private individual with an area of 76,000 square feet, which 66,435 square feet is within the habitat management area. This action reduced the open space area to 22,40 acres. Development of lots eight and nine is what caused the encroachment. The wall was constructed and the yards established during the summer of 2018. Currently, there are 6,240 square feet of well-established lawn on the two lots with an attractively built wall. We're proposing the developer be allowed to purchase an 8,100 square foot parcel of open space from the town to be added to lots eight and nine, thus eliminating encroachment. This will still leave 22.21 acres of open space. Want to remind the board that developer provided over 4 acres more of open space than he was required. And he was rushed to deed the open space to town before he was close to completing the subdivision. And hoping the board will look on that proposal as a more favorable option removing and relocating the wall, altering the established stable vegetation. So we have the management map.
Yeah, you can see the, the, the area in the purple that you see outlines is the, is the management, habitat management area. There was a separate ones, there were two separate areas on either side of the wetlands.
Where's Ian in place?
The encroachment is up by the end of the cul-de-sac, those two lots right there. Room is, if you look at the
Oh, I see that you
If you, if you look at the eight, the 11 by 17 that you have on it shows it. You can see that, that
Oh, yeah.
Well, what's the widest point in the wall to the new lot line?
It's approximately inches, about 20 feet.
That's the only area on that lot.
Basically, basically from the existing lot line to the wall, there's, there's five point about the point.
So, yeah, we're talking about a 20-foot strip of land, the width of the development.
Yes, and only a portion of it is within the habitat area, only
Gotcha.
I look at the dock line as the limit of the habitat, so this all of here is not in the habitat area.
Gotcha.
It's only this 2,100 square feet here that's in the, in the habitat area.
All right, I, I guess the biggest question is, is Ann on tonight's meeting? Hi, see you up there.
Hey, Bill, Patrice has got her hand up.
Uh, Patrice, yes.
Hi, I'm sure Ann has much more information to follow up on this, but this you mentioned and detail.
Well, I was just getting to that, that's why I was looking to speak to Ann or Gavin.
It's considered Article 97 land, which means there are many restrictions, many expensive and time restrictions to sell it. And it has to go to the state legislature. And as a volunteer, I won't be participating in that process. And I, I think the encroachment was the sole responsibility of the developer despite the letter faulting the town's process. The encroachment was announced to the town by Metacomit and was denied by this developer's rep despite his letter to the town with his proposal. So I think we need to look at those ramifications before we discuss any type of width or depth on this proposal.
I think the only reason we're just trying to determine width or depth is to see the adverse effect to the development. We're obviously not gonna make, obviously, if the developer can't buy the, the property or for whatever reason, I mean, it's, it's in the behest of the planning board to approve anything that would allow that. So at this point, I think I, I tend to agree with you that, you know, unless there's some opportunity made to purchase this land, the planning board, you know, it's land you don't own at this point. So you can't develop property you don't own.
And I mean, that's an encroachment, so I mean, to try to
I mean, I'm not even, I'm not sure legally we can, you know, it's Article 97 property.
Yeah, but how did it, how were you able to create that street lot on George Street out of that same parcel of land? How did that happen?
I can answer that as well. That specifically was written in the language that was voted on at town meeting. The warrant specifically
And you can go that process where we go to town meeting, but then now it's Article 97 land, takes one extra step to go to, to state legislature to get approved. You know, and, yeah, I'm not saying it can't be done, but there's, there's steps that need to be taken to achieve that. And
Hey, Bill? Talking about this in conservation a little bit too. These people's land, I mean, I know that there's obviously some wrongdoing here. Taxpayers in the town start digging stuff out and, you know, making these people you know, you're gonna start drastically changing this landscape of these houses. If the, if the applicant wants to approve, get his, his road accepted and he has to go through all avenues, this will all work, whether it's legislate, legislature or whatever he has to do. And if, you know, at all costs, then he, I guess, would have to do that, right?
Correct. I mean, that's, that's where we're at now because I don't think the, if, if, Patrice, if I'm correct, I don't think Metacom will accept it the way it is, correct?
We will not record the conservation restriction, no. This is also in violation of the Massachusetts Endangered Species permit that they received.
The, the, I mean, when nobody's asking anybody to do anything that's a volunteer to do anything, this is the responsibility of the gentleman that is on the subdivision. He has to come up with a logical, I mean, a a, a, a solution to this problem before the road's gonna get accepted.
Yeah.
We did not fairly represent this as a very difficult and time-consuming process for the town. Town legal will get involved. That's my taxpayer dollars. Town volunteers were very involved all day today.
You know what? Everything that has any cost that's gonna happen with the town, the applicant will have to pay for it.
That's the way I would present it to the applicant.
I would, I would think that at this point, Patrice, that any volunteer work and whatever's going on in the background, I think, should stop. I don't think we should utilize any resource going forward. And it's up to the applicant before road acceptance, come back with a plan. Now, he's probably gonna have to work with, you know, Metacom and, and you guys. But he's gonna be the one that comes up with a plan that you guys agree would work.
A little bit, I mean, we don't want to just go in here and bash this guy because he, he, he had a, a problem with his lot. If he's willing to do something different for the town, maybe he can help us in some different situations with Metacomit on some different property that the town owns, that Metacom, Metacomit oversees. I don't know, but we, we just can't be negative on everything. It seems like everybody's very negative about this situation and nobody wants to help. They just want to bash it.
Well, Damon, I think it's, I think it's, I, I think it's, the issue at hand right now is we have a set of state regulations that won't allow for Menden to accept their
I'm trying to understand why this was done.
Right, understood, but you know what? Somebody, it's their responsibility to make it happen the right way. But we should all still try to keep an open mind to it, I think.
Yeah, I, I totally agree. If they can come up with something that works and, and we can and, you know, we can take down an avenue that's, that meets Metacom's requirements. I agree, we should do anything we can to, to achieve that. We've got a problem here. We gotta figure out a way to fix it.
We don't have a problem.
Well, the problem.
The applicant has a problem.
But we also have now have property owners that are caught in the middle of this.
That's right.
And, and they're mending residents now.
So why were the lots expanded?
I don't know. Because we, we, we have, we set the, the limits of the open space. We set the open space monuments.
Right.
We have a, we have a certified letter from our surveyor that he went out and inspected it. And they are right where they're supposed to be according to the plan. And that was done prior to these lots being developed and then all of a sudden.
Didn't like the way they laid out, so he decided to expand them a little more?
It looks that way, yes.
Not looking for anybody to just open their arms and let, let him do whatever he wants, but I'm just looking at the people that live in that subdivision that have, have beautiful yards. And I mean, if there's something we can do here that's not gonna affect the turtles or anything like that, that we can keep everybody happy as a resident, not as an applicant, is more what I'm concerned about, not, I just want to, I guess you, we're on the same page, Bill. You, you said, like you said, taxpayer and town.
And we, but the only problem is we, it's gotta be able to pass a regulatory sniff test before we can get to that point. And that's gonna have to be the applicant's, the applicant's responsibility to carry this forward. And I don't think it should, and I agree with Patrice, it shouldn't come at any cost to the community.
Absolutely not.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Another issue that just needs to be considered is that the town can't just sell land to a developer or anyone. They have to go through a bidding process and then whoever's the highest bidder gets the property. So it may or may not be the developer. And also, it has to be voted at town meeting. So the process is gonna be pretty lengthy to do this. And, and then also So the process is gonna be pretty lengthy to do this, and, and then also, no work can be done on that area between April fifteenth and October fifteenth, you know, in the habitat area.
Actually, Anne, I was looking through some stuff today that said that there's a possibility, and I, I haven't gone over this with town council yet, but when a developer buys land, especially in open space issues, where they've gifted land to, to the town for the open space requirement, allotting property back to them doesn't have to, may not have to go through that bidding process. So that's something I need to review and go over with Cindy, obviously, but where they owned the property originally and actually, you know, gifted to the town for the, for the open space development, it may not need to go through that step, but I, I still need approval from town council on that.
Yeah, you, you might be right on that. That the Article ninety-seven would have to jump through a lot of hoops, town meeting.
Yeah, it's definitely gotta go before town meeting, it's gotta go, you know, it's gonna have to come back through us to, just to get it to that point, and, so, there are a lot of steps in this, and it's gonna be up to the applicant to, to take care of it. I mean, I don't, I don't see any quick and easy way around this, Bob.
No, like I said.
All this here is not in the habitat area. This is the only area that's in the habitat area.
So that's the only, that's the only that's subject to Article ninety-seven?
I would believe so, if it's, if you're talking about.
Anne, can you confirm that for us, that only the area in the habitat is Article ninety-seven?
I don't understand that.
I think all of it would be because, at the, if you read the town meeting vote, the town accepted all that property as open space, and that, I believe, puts it in Article ninety-seven, but town council would have to.
Yeah, I can address that with town council, too. I mean, I can get to the answer, Bob, but that'd be her determination.
That's fine. That's why I'm here, to determine, so, so that I can present to my client what his options are.
Yeah, if, if, if someone, someone come up with it, but I think we're, I, I'm, I think that's the only avenue to go at this point, because, you know, Metacomit's regulations and the Article ninety-seven kind of prevents us from doing anything outside that. Patrice, did you wanna say something, or?
Yes, you know, in the time that we have spent in this meeting, the last planning board and the conservation meeting, in the time I've spent with the regulators and the conservation reviewer at the state level, I could have taken that wall out myself by hand with a forty-pound sledge. It's not gonna be a huge deal to remove, regrade, and then plant with natives. I, I know the landowners may be upset, but that is between the landowners and what they were promised by the developer. That's something that the developer has as a problem, not the town.
Gotcha.
If the, if the town would allow us to regrade in the open space as opposed to, you know, in other words, if we were able to go back to the property line, take the wall out, and then start from the property line and grade down, gradually grade down to the, in the, so the grading would take place within the open space, as opposed to having the wall there, that might be not so bad.
Yeah, I, I'd have to look at, um.
So why wouldn't the wall just go on the property line?
Yeah, it could, I mean, you know.
I'm not sure we can allow the grading.
Then you're not regrading at all.
What's that?
If the wall goes on the property line like it should have been in the first place, you wouldn't.
Yeah, you're not regrading at all.
Well, you gotta, you gotta dig it up.
Well, that's between a developer and a homeowner.
Exactly. No matter what, you gotta dig.
Yeah, but the, the question is whether you can actually grade onto open space. I don't think you can, you know.
But no matter what, if you're gonna make them take the wall out, you gotta dig all that out.
Can you reuse the blocks to rebuild the wall?
It's a segmented black block wall, it's.
What's that?
It's a segmented block wall, he's not gonna lose the, the wall.
Right. So he just has to regrade it back twenty feet.
Yeah.
All right, well, I think we have enough information, we'll wait to hear back from you guys on what your options are, but I think those are your two options, either move the wall back twenty feet, or you figure out a way to. Allows for you to purchase Article ninety-seven land, and, but I think the easiest way, obviously, for the applicant and everybody else, is if he just moves the wall back, but I don't, I'll check, but I don't believe we can, you can grade into the open space.
I don't see how.
And part of it's in habitat, so I know you can't.
Some of it is.
Like I said, it's, I think it's the applicant's responsibility to propose to us some options, not us propose them options, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, I mean, that's where we stand right now, Bob, so if you wanna go back to, uh, your client and review all this stuff with them, you know, we'll be, we'll be having a listen to anything, but we have to make sure that, you know, everything is done proper before we accept that road.
You gotta press it with a hand raised, Bill.
All right, who is it? Go ahead.
Yeah, this is Carl Hummel, fifteen Misco, I'm on the Conservation Commission, and we had a conversation with the people at Mass Fisheries and Wildlife about the habitat that may be part of the grading conversation. The area between the stone wall and where the stone wall should have been, they've made a determination that that area is not a significant taking of the endangered species habitat, so it may be possible to do grading in there.
Thanks, Bob.
Well, you know what, and, and I plan on investigating that, and I'll look at it with, with town council, I mean, it's part of open space, so.
Yes.
It gets a little tricky with the Article ninety-seven property.
Right, there may be other agencies besides Mass Wildlife that would say, don't grade, but the, the Fisheries and Wildlife probably would sign off on it.
Well, that's good news, you know.
Anybody else that would like to?
You got, Patrice has got her hand up.
Yep. Regrading would be acceptable to Metacomit, it's the structure that we cannot have the conservation restriction on, but this also involves a chain link fence and a much higher stone wall on the northern parcel. So there will be a lot of considerations there, but we, we would be okay with regrading, and there are several conditions that I believe should be imposed. If you're going to regrade into the open space, then I don't wanna see green lawn there, I would like to see natives planted, little blue-stem grass, other flowering pollinator type things that are native to that habitat and support the turtle habitat management. We can provide a list.
Hey, Patrice, did we, didn't we establish the, that the fence was on the, was the landowner's, the property owner of fifteen Pond Street?
It's the northern more parcel, I don't.
That's not the builder's problem, that's the landowner on that particular house.
Who are we talking about?
Fifteen.
Where's that?
That, that lot right there, that, that, the, the, well, I have it on my email, but fifteen Pond Street is the northern, you came down cul-de-sac, it would be the house on the right in the cul-de-sac, and he, they have, that chain link fence is the property owner's, um, putting it up on the, you know, when he shouldn't have, it's on the wrong spot, so.
Well, based on where the stone wall is, he was just filling in to where he thought his property bounds were.
Correct, so that's the property owner, not the, not the contractor. Somebody would have to chase fifteen Pond Street and tell them to take the, take the fence down.
Yeah, and that, and that's, to be honest with you, I'm not as concerned about that, that's between the homeowner and the developer, the developer's gonna have to resolve that.
Where's the fence?
It's right there with the ladder hanging off it.
Right, it's in the picture, in the pictures.
Right, but that's what I'm getting at, is that's not on conservation land, right?
No, that's not Article ninety-seven.
Yes, it is.
Oh, that is?
Yes, if you can see the gate in that fence, if you can see the gate in the fence, that's the property line.
Oh, that arrow, okay.
Yes.
That's the actual property line?
The left of the arrow is all open space conservation land.
Okay.
So I guess a, a letter would have to be written to the, the homeowner from, 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 from the people that are responsible for the conservation land, right? Cause the home, the, the contractor doesn't own that anymore. You guys own it, cause we can't, nobody can touch it but Metacomit, so.
Now, the town owns the land.
Okay, so the town has to call him and tell him to take it off there.
Right, that would be Conservation Commission.
Okay, what I'm just saying, it's not the builder, I just wanna make sure we're all clear that that's the town's problem, not the builder's problem.
Yeah, and did they, is that a six-foot? Didn't require permit?
I don't know.
Yeah. Hang tall and sixty requires.
So is that fence on the actual property line, or is it on?
Um, Patrice, just so I'm clear, you're saying if they took the wall out, you'd allow grading into? Into the Article ninety-seven land? As long as it was?
Native plant.
Native plantings?
That'll take a vote by Metacomit, but I have had a preliminary discussion with them, yes.
Okay, so we can get rid of the wall altogether, grade down, and do plantings?
That sounds good to me.
Oh, that was easy enough.
Well, the grading needs to be approved, too, and we need, we need a plan to see how far in it goes before, I'm.
So I can, at least I can go back to my developer with an option to say.
Yeah.
Either move your wall on the property line, or you can take the wall out and from the property line, you need to, you know, eliminate the lawn area.
Yeah.
And the grading was gonna have to be something that's not gonna be, it's gonna have to be something that's gonna be mowable, walkable.
Well, not, not in the Article ninety-seven land, because they don't want it mowed, they want native planting, so.
Right, right, right.
Just as long as it can be stabilized.
Yeah, as long as it can be stabilized.
Right, okay.
Let's not put any more grass where people are gonna run their lawn mowers down there.
Yeah, we don't want lawn, but it does have to be mowed, at least portion in the turtle habitat management has to be mowable, because there's a mowing requirement every seven years for the turtle habitat management area.
Is that in the turtle habitat management area?
Not the northern portion.
Not the northern one, the southern one is.
So you'll have to address grade on that southern and make sure that it is mowable, that it's not a.
And, and look at, and, and basically with the, with the southern portion, you could move the wall and still not affect the, the yard as much as it would the northern one.
Yeah, so if you move just that, that, the wall that's in the habitat back to hold it, so it gives us stability and allows for capable mowing.
Yep.
But on the other side, we, we can grade down. You know, they, bring him to your, bring him to your client, see what he has to say, and, and.
Cause I think if the, if the northern one, the law is just tall, which is the other, the upper portion of the space.
At least you got some options now.
Yes, I do, thank you.
Yeah, maybe sometime this year, we can put this thing to rest and move on.
Yeah.
Well, Patrice, thanks for that information, that was a, that was very helpful.
Yeah, thanks, Bob.
You know, I'm sure Anne will advise, oh, Patrice, when, next time, oh, go ahead, Patrice.
Just turning it off.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you for your time tonight. Yeah, I, I think that this discussion was very helpful, this is never easy to, to manage, but I think we, you know, I think we.
Progress, I think it was.
I think we came up with a lot of opportunities tonight.
Not like it was before.
No. Well, I kept seeing emails going back, and I felt no, nothing was really getting resolved. Is there any other questions by the community? I don't see hands up, so I presume everybody's all set.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn by Barry, we have a second by John, and all those in favor.
Barry, aye.
Dave and aye.
Phil Ambrosino, aye.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Hey, Bill, we gotta, when is that the?